Special meeting, April 8th, 2015. Let's see, meetings being recorded for accuracy. Please leave.
To the United States of America, the free republic, the voice of stands, one nation, under God, and the freedom of liberty and justice for all.
Here?
Here.
Three thirty.
Here.
Five, excuse me, Johnson here.
Okay, uh, meeting is for, try to find a new certified operator. Uh, we invited Leeds group, and we would like to know where you guys stand on this. If you'd be one interested in coming in to operate, now we need the fees and stuff from you.
Mm-hmm. You want me to talk on that now, Marty?
Please.
Um, so, I mean, we're interested in helping the authority out. Um, it's always our intention when we go into, because we do help other systems. We've helped the sewer authority, um, and worked with other systems also. I always say this off the get-go, I mean, we're the Band-Aid, we're not the cure. I mean, obviously, you know, I would encourage the authority to, you know, try to retain the services of a, somebody that's a little bit closer. We're two hours away, I mean, I'm just being honest about that. Um, you know, I think it's also, you know, Eric's done a good job for the authority and, you know, kudos to him, he's moving on, I wish him the best. Um, Henry has taken his exams, and, and I don't know what his intentions are, if he's interested in being, and I'm not trying to put Henry on the spot, but, um, I'm just talking from our perspective. I mean, we would obviously need him to be integrally involved, um, because obviously for us to be here every day is probably not realistic or feasible from an economic standpoint. Um, so, the one scenario, I'll just talk about it first. Hypothetically speaking, if Henry would be the guy that's gonna be doing the day-to-day sampling and operations and managing of the system, you know, I envision us, myself and Brian, being here two days a week potentially, just to oversee and, and answer any questions that Henry would have, and just help on the DEP recording end of things, and just to ensure things are still in compliance. Um, the fees for us to do that, um, our operations fees is sixty dollars an hour. I mean, obviously, that covers all of our liability and everything else from an insurance standpoint. We would not charge mileage, um, for us to come up, that would be included in that hourly rate. So, again, if you run the numbers, um, sixteen hours a week, you know, it works out to be about thirty-eight hundred, forty dollars a month.
Right.
Um, for us to do that. If Henry passes his exams and he wants to be the certified operator for the authority, and I think Henry has done an outstanding job from our opinion, um, he's learned to do the daily testing, I think he's comfortable with that. Um, if he does pass his certifications, he has enough time from a, from working under Eric or working under another certified operator to get certified at this point. Um, he would basically just have to submit his results to DEP and, and apply for his certificate, which that takes basically three to four months, depends on, the state board of certification meets for, like, four times a year, every quarter, so it depends on what meeting you hit for them to evaluate your package and then get your certificate back. Um, I don't foresee, I mean, again, if Henry passed all, all of his exams, realistically in three and a half, you know, three to four months, he could have his certificate and be the guy. Um, so then, again, that limits, takes away time that we would have to spend, but, and again, we would be here to assist him via phone or, um, you know, whatever he would need. If he would need us to be here on site, we would gladly assist him. Um, again, we'll, we'll help in any way, shape, or form that the authority would like. Um, but again, for us to be here every day, again, I don't think that's realistic. Um, I did talk with Dennis Beck, um, we work with Central Main Line Sewer Authority down in the Portage area, and he's on their board, um, the directors. Dennis, I think, still wants to stay involved, and again, I don't wanna speak for him either, but, um, it sounded like he would still be interested in covering the weekends if necessary. Um, but again, I don't think he, he didn't say this out, right out, but, I mean, is he willing to hang his license? Maybe he is, and maybe that's, and I don't know what arrangements you have with him as far as payment and that type of thing, but, and again, that's not my business, but, um, I think Dennis is a very good option, and I think I would encourage the authority to still keep him on board also. Again, I kinda look at this as a team effort until, you know, the board decides, you know, maybe advertise or get some applicants in here and look at that. And again, if Henry passes and is gonna be the guy, great, you know, move in that direction, get him another guy to help him with what he needs to do on a day-to-day basis, and, again, we'll assist.
Um, with Henry's time, he's got just, you know, a little more than a year.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it two years? They check the records, is it two years, I think?
Not, that's for an A. I think for this system, you'd think you only need a year, um, the way I understand it.
Okay.
I don't think you need two years, because it's not, it's not an A certification system. So, I think you only need a year under a certified operator to get your license.
Yeah.
We can check into that, but I-
So that, you know, obviously, I guess it's a different option.
Correct.
Too, but-
Correct.
When I came into this meeting, I was assuming that it was two years that he needed, and we were looking as, you know, a bridge between now and then.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for that, especially with the projects, we've got our, everything in hand now, so we can start moving.
Sure. Sure. So, again, again, I think the big things to find out is, did Henry pass his exams? You know, that's, that's critical. Um, and I, like, we were just talking before the meeting, sorry, some of our guys took some exams the same day Henry did, and they were, they just got their results last night or Monday night in the mail, so they should be coming here this week, and so that would, you know, be a good thing, but I think that's gonna dictate what direction the authority ultimately goes.
Right. We do have a letter from Dennis, uh, you know, with the proposal.
Okay.
And he is willing to work six hours a day.
Okay.
You know, to help us bridge his gap, you know, we've got his rates. Um, the problem we have is, obviously, they want somebody twenty-four hours a day availability, you know, for that, and that's what we have to look at, you know, at this point. He's also, you know, he's ninety miles away too for an emergency.
Right.
Type call-out, so.
If the authority wouldn't want you to come to a meeting, would it be the sixty-dollar rate for that too, or?
Typically, when we come to the meetings, we do that under retainer, it's, it's a hundred dollars whether we're, whether we're here for six hours or an hour. Um, I mean, that's our hour, that's our meeting rate, and when we come to any of the, any of our authority meetings, it's a hundred dollars, and again, whether one person comes or five people come from our office, it's, it's the same rate, we don't charge mileage for that.
Okay, as far as charging mileage, the sixty dollars an hour is from the time you leave Johnston, so for two hours coming up is a hundred and twenty dollars?
It, it, it could be Bob, I mean, again, we have operations in Burnside, which is in Clearfield.
Yeah, but, I mean, the worst case would be you leave Johnston, it would be a hundred and twenty dollars for you to get here, time at the plant, a hundred and twenty dollars to the back.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
What about this Henry, how many hours a week is he gonna work?
I mean, he's already at full-time.
He's already full-time.
Henry's already at full-time.
Oh, okay.
That's it, that's me.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would, I would hope he'd still stay up for four hours a week, so.
Yeah, probably more, but, yeah.
How much time that you guys have involved with a water plant like we have a burn deal? I mean, you guys have any experience with it?
Yeah, we have, we have some other, so, we have two other systems that are very similar, like this, this type of layout and design. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, every plan is unique, every, you know.
Well, I understand that, because we got, but what started all this was an operator that, how we ended up in this mess was because somebody didn't do what they were supposed to do.
Sure.
Uh, has the board checked locally? I know, uh, CJ Miles from Duvois at one point worked here.
We did, we placed an ad.
Who was very, uh-
We did place an ad, no, because I was sure, which is what I need to say.
Pardon me? I can't hear you.
No, I asked her if we were, if we had placed an ad yet, we had not, so.
Well, I, I think I'd reach out to him personally, because he's worked at the plant for a couple of years up there, he was under contract to, uh, the identifying operator, but, uh, he's got everything he needs to run the plant, uh, and-
I know Eric has made communication with him, but we have not, you know, during this process, so, that's why we're having a meeting, to see what our options are and, you know, and take a direction.
Yeah, I understand that, but, uh, I mean, obviously, uh, for two-hour travel time, that somewhat limits the, uh, the personnel, and I think it'd be prudent, and I'm sure you'd agree, to look in this area, see who you can find. I know at one time, and I don't ever saw anything in writing, it was questioned about eight years ago, what they would do for a backup operator, and they said they would go to St. Mary's. Now, I never saw any contract or written agreements, but, hey, you might wanna call Dwight over there and talk to him a little bit, see if, they couldn't just lend you somebody, or, you know, obviously, you'd have to pay for it, but-
Well, finding out that Henry could be available, you know-
Yeah, well, sure.
-as an operator in the next few months is, is gonna shed the light on everything for us right now. You know, I think, uh, my opinion with Dennis, willing to put in those hours and continue, he's, he has been working with Henry also as far as his training and stuff, the same thing he did with Eric when he was up here initially. You know, I think it's somebody that we need to keep on, you know, at this point.
Well, if you, um, put Henry on as the main operator in a few months, who would be the backup operator? Would it be Dennis, or?
It would be Dennis.
Dennis.
Still, Frank.
Yeah, that's the question I was asking, I mean, whichever route we go, since we have the possibility of having Henry be, be our guy, and Dennis here, uh, somebody's still gotta cover the weekends, you know, so we still need pretty much the same setup we have now. Um, I think we really need to get the answers on whether Henry can get that certification in the next few months before we decide to change it, because if Dennis would become our main guy, who, who's gonna cover the weekends? Is that Henry? Is that the, the theory? You know what I mean? That's, 'cause he's only willing to work-
Six, six hours a day.
-four days a week. I know there's issue there with his retirement, it's during, uh, there is kind of, this kinda surprised me today that he was willing to even take on forty, forty hours a week.
I think we should ask Kennedy's opinion, what he thinks of this, you know, here.
Well, but I don't wanna work seven days a week. Right, I mean, if it's an emergency and it gets live for a short period of time.
Right.
Okay, but, you know, I have a life outside of work.
Don't bother that.
I mean, I do do things, you know what I mean?
Uh.
I'm willing to help.
You wanna stay on it, then?
I'm not gonna tuck tail and run.
Good, good.
Do you have to have a guy there seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Right now, we do, yes.
Somebody, somebody needs to check the plant and, and make sure everything's in compliance seven days a week.
At least till probably the end of the year.
Now, does that have to be a licensed operator seven days a week?
No.
No.
Working under, working under the operator.
Yeah, under the operator's supervision.
Right, as long as you're working under standard operating procedures, Bob, but, I mean, and under the guidance and direction of a certified operator, then, then you're covered.
This guy that's gonna work, if they would wanna work six hours a day, would that be enough?
It should be with Henry there filling in the other time.
And the other guy that's got the license and everything?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, good.
That's, go up, what?
Are you going to be looking for a secretary in the future also?
That's the, the other questions that I have too, Christine. I think we're gonna need an extra maintenance guy, basically, to, you know, fill in Henry's position at this point, and the secretary in the next couple of months. You know, we need to probably be moving at the end of the school year, so, so there's two positions, we'll definitely have to, you know, fill here quickly.
Yeah.
One, to get somebody in so she can train him.
I think we gotta work out who's, I mean, obviously, I think, whose license is gonna be hanging there, and then what variation of hours, obviously, Henry's already got us forty hours a week, and we'd like to keep him there and see where, where that leads to with his testing. Um, but if, if, obviously, Dennis is willing to work more hours than we thought he was, we can figure out how that's gonna work and develop a schedule that kinda overlaps, so neither one of them's working seven days a week, but the weekends are being covered, um, see how Leeds fits into that, or? Yeah, and if Dennis is willing to hang his license, and, and again, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that, and if you'd want us to, the assist would be a backup.
Right.
We'll gladly fill that role also.
I, I think for now, that might be our best option, because you guys are most familiar with, you know, what's going on and stuff. You know, if we could utilize him as the, you know, chief operator.
Sure.
And then keep you guys as a backup, you know, possibly, you know, to cover, you know, maybe a weekend or something like that, an emergency.
Also, will we know if he passes his test?
Should know this week.
Should know this week, you know.
I'll, I'll open that cell when I get home.
And then he has to apply for the certification.
Correct.
It could take a couple of months, you know, at a minimum, we're looking at, you know, maybe July or August, I would think.
I would agree with that.
Did he do the background check, the police?
They, they do that, that's part of the package when you submit your-
I thought you had to do that.
Yeah, your background check.
Yeah, but you could do that now, you know, it saves a little time. I don't know how long one takes, but-
It, it, as long as there's nothing on your record, it, you can get it instantly, it just costs ten bucks, and you go through the state police, 'cause when they send you your certification packet, that's part of that, and we can help you with that too, Henry, and it-
So, I said that before from right at his mouth.
Yeah, okay.
Same thing.
So, I think we need to find out Dennis's intentions or what days, you know, maybe if he's saying, if he's hanging his license, he's only wants to be there Monday through Friday, I, I mean, we need to find out more information from Dennis on, on how that's gonna work, you know what I mean? If they can come together and work that overlapping schedule, cover them seven days a week.
Jeremy, can you get in touch with Dennis before Tuesday's meeting? You're ready for a meeting?
I'm sure we can, yeah. And, I mean, again, we'll, we'll gladly, you know, we can submit a formal package. I didn't wanna spend time and stuff putting all that together if we didn't know what direction we were gonna go. Again, I think the best direction, if it was me, is the one we're talking about, Henry being the guy, if he passed, if that gets submitted, if Dennis is willing to fill the role for a temporary period and then maybe us be the backup, I think that's a pretty realistic option, and I think DEP would be comfortable with that, but at, at the end of the day, it's ultimately, I mean, focusing the customer, I mean, that's, that's the most important thing, so. I think we have more options than we thought we had.
Yep.
And we need to get more information from Dennis.
We'll talk to Dennis.
Can you, can you get him on the phone?
If we can clarify today on the certification and the things, like, how much time he would need, I mean, we'll figure that out today.
The other is, need to put an ad in for, obviously, for, for maintenance person and a secretary, we need to start working on that. Better I will be done soon?
Yeah.
Later?
You have asked from previous time, that we can just run the same plan we were looking for before, now, we're looking for, I was looking for an operator in this scenario, or just a maintenance person.
Maintenance?
Yeah.
Just maintenance, but Henry?
Right. Probably somebody that could be trained as well, because that seems to have worked out pretty well for us in the process.
It has, yeah.
Marty, I think it would be a good idea if you had Mrs. Anita looking for the secretary, you would also look for a backup person to train with that secretary as well, so we're not in a jam we are in now.
A good idea, Anita?
Okay, sure.
We'll keep that in mind when we interview.
I think we both train at the same time. He's gonna call back, he's, that's every, there is almost dawn, we get service, we'll call back eventually.
Okay, Anita, um, first thing is we're gonna put an ad in for a maintenance person and secretary at this point. And when we interview, we'll keep that secretary option open as a backup, then, who applies to the positions.
Is that gonna be full-time maintenance?
Yes.
And a secretary, you need, what's your hours, how many each roughly a week?
Uh, about twenty-five.
He's gonna do that as a motion.
So, it's only makes one? How many's a motion? Second, full-time maintenance and twenty-five hours a week per secretary.
Right. Second?
Approximately, I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose?
How about the backup secretary?
The backup secretary's gonna be an option when we interview to see if there's anyone that would fit into that criteria. We're not gonna be basically looking for a backup, but if we get a couple of good candidates, we'll do an interview in that direction, see if they'll, you know, cover six time or whatever, but obviously, we'll be looking for local, you know, people that are close by. And, uh, the other thing is, what Bob said is, I'll try to get ahold of CJ myself, I have not talked to him at all, I know he's been going back and forth with Eric, and just see what, what option he gives us.
He worked with Dennis as well.
Yeah.
Right, so, he's familiar, I mean, that might be an option to fill in some.
Well, even on, you know, every other weekend or something, so Henry's not, we don't put him in the same position that we put Eric, you know, to the maintenance.
You might wanna talk to Dwight over at St. Mary's, maybe one of their guys might be interested in.
Well, with the options we have right now, Bob, if CJ's willing to-
Yeah.
-put in some time, he's familiar with the plant, we've got Henry, we've got Dennis, and we've got Leeds group, I think we're-
I understand, I understand, if that door closes on you, there's another option.
Yeah, but I think right now, that's a lot more options than I thought we had coming into the meeting, to be honest with you. I didn't know what direction we're gonna have to go with it, so. And it's just waiting on Dennis.
I think it's gonna be in a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
You gonna handle that when he calls, or do you want to have to discuss the technicalities of it, or?
Well, first, we gotta, we've gotta know what he wants as far as, um, his proposal and stuff, but we have him during the week, we're not gonna have him on the weekends, obviously, so what we'll need to do is just basically flex the hours with him, you know?
Okay, okay.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday, you know, on one week, it'd be, right?
Have we traded off back, what, how they would like to try to do it.
Six hours a day enough on the weekend?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, as long as there's not an emergency situation going on, I think that's more than enough. Yeah, and he, and he said six, he preferred to work six hours a day, uh, not eight unless conditions required, so, he's familiar with what's going on there, I just kinda looked at it.
Eric is done next Friday, correct, the seventeen?
Seventeen, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our meeting's on the fourteenth, so we have another meeting prior.
The other problem we have, and I gave the papers to Anita, I was sent over some papers by the DEP for the operator change, and we basically gotta give them ten days' notice, so, we have to make a decision on.
They're, they're lenient with that, 'cause sometimes people just walk out, so it's difficult to get somebody ten days' notice if somebody quits that day.
That's what we have to send.
They'll work with you on that, they're, they're not gonna hold your feet to the power.
Yeah.
This is Jay's foundation, remember?
Actually, I, I think we're over the hump with them, once we've got our permits and everything, I think they're more comfortable now than they have been.
Seven years, this plan yet fine.
Well, they're, they're confident in the people that we, we have had working there, and, and that really changed everything, how they're looking at it for us, so.
Never done one with him, he had time, you know?
Never. It's not just your time, it's a lot of thoughts. You have a word to talk to the list.
But, who'd be on the papers?
Anita, you'll be staying on till?
Yeah.
June?
Till June.
June, do you have a, I mean, June the first, or June, so, while we're going through the process, you know, you don't-
No, the kids aren't going to school till June fifth, so-
June fifth.
I'd be a hell of a for that.
Say she gives adequate time to find someone and get her, you know, so we don't throw her to the wolves.
Is the full-time maintenance, the, the extra full-time maintenance person, are they gonna have, um, benefits?
Yes.
Are you, uh, are you gonna expect that person to, uh, become licensed?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have performance criteria written that in so many years he has to achieve that, or are you s-
I don't think we have any specific criteria written, but that'll be part of the interview process with them.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Hello, Dennis. Okay, I'm gonna put down Steve's phone, okay?
No, we're in a meeting.
Yeah, I told him, sorry.
Hey, Dennis?
Yes?
Um, we are reviewing the letter that you sent up, we have the Leeds group here with us.
Okay.
And they are comfortable with you taking over.
Okay.
You know, until Henry's, uh, fully licensed to, you know, do the plant and stuff.
Right.
Um, we, we've got your thing about, you know, minimum six hours a day, obviously, because you're traveling or whatever.
Right.
Do you have a, a specific criteria as far as, you know, days, weekends, is it flexible?
Flexible.
Okay. Jeremy? Any questions for Dennis?
No, I mean, that, that's been our biggest question, Dennis, is if you and Henry could develop a schedule to possibly overlap the weekends, uh, and you're willing to hang your certification and, and have him work underneath it.
Yes.
Okay. My goodness, you guys have any questions for him?
No, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that.
Okay. We're still under a consent order, so, uh, we still have work to do to get through that, uh, but I can work with Henry and, and we can, we can set up a schedule, um, on the, I'll get the plant covered.
We can help, we can help.
The way Henry's whatsoever, um, and we may need another part-timer or somebody else hired, so, if you have in mind.
The Leeds group said that they're be willing to, you know, back up also.
Okay.
With that, and, uh, you know, as long as you're comfortable with, you know, working a flex schedule with Henry and having them, you know, to cover any emergencies or whatever we might have.
Okay.
And, and we are gonna advertise for another full-time maintenance person in there also.
Okay.
Just because of the amount of work that we have, you know, from here on out.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, Dennis, thank you.
That consent order has to be completed by, is it July?
No, December.
Or December?
We have a rest of this year, which we have probably four weeks left on the well project, and then, um, we're replacing an ad for bids, I need the amount, we have the permit in hand, which is where I need you guys next to put together a bid package.
Okay.
For the, uh, the media plant, the one that we have approved.
Okay.
So that when we get somebody in here, there's no, uh, we didn't know that was included and everything else, like we made it to the last time.
Okay.
Okay, so you can start working on that for us.
Sure.
And we can get moving on that.
All right, media plant, is that something that's gonna be bid out, or is that something?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's, like, he's gonna do the bid package for us.
Oh, so, okay, I didn't hear that, sorry.
Yep, like I said, and we have a better idea now exactly what we have to do, you know, for the DEP, no gray areas anymore, so.
We need a motion to put Dennis on this, uh, as a bid operator.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
What was that motion?
To, to add Dennis Beck as a certified operator. Work out the details hopefully between now and the next meeting. That's what you need in order to throw out that paperwork. Anything else?
Henry, you okay with all that?
So far, so good.
All right, Dennis, hang his license and...
Yeah, I'm fine with working with Dennis.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then I was...
Obviously, there's gonna be times where six hours ain't gonna work.
Right, well, yeah, he's...
I mean, we've all seen the around-the-clock things happen.
Well, like he says, if he, if he has to, he will put in the extra hours, it's just that, that's not gonna be by choice, it'll be by necessity. And what I'd like you to do too is when we start interviewing for a maintenance guy, to be a part of those interviews.
I'd like to do that, because I'm gonna have to work handedly with him.
Yeah, I think Eric and Anita should be given a letter of recommendations for whenever they go for another job, because I think they did a fine job here, if they wouldn't have been with a lot of opposition from certain people, they might have stayed.
Well, obviously, Eric doesn't need a letter...
No, I know he's got another job, but it always looks good if you keep have one in hand.
Yeah. That's something that we will definitely do for them.
What is the status of ending the Articles of Incorporation? 'Cause here you're setting three members, this board is still, as far as I know, under the Commonwealth Charter, a seven-member board, so the question comes up about a quorum.
They weren't filed and approved by the state.
They were, you have them back, and the supervisors have them back? Okay, see, I've never heard any discussion about them.
That was a few meetings ago.
Okay, I never heard it mentioned at all.
It's now a five-member board.
Okay.
Which is another thing that the supervisors are gonna have to look into in a few months. You got additional board member? One. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?